Hello, hello. Welcome to the Town Meeting Program for Tuesday, the 11th of April. Didn't have a lot of time to warn you this was coming, but hopefully you got the word. And anytime we visit with the Cordova Chamber of Commerce, you know it's going to be an interesting one. Kathy Renfelt and Karen Deaton Perry are here to tell us about what's coming up just in the next, I don't know, week, 10 days, something like that, with Business Beers, the Business Empowerment Summit, the Boost Program, and of course, the Shorebird Festival, and all the ways that our local businesses can get involved and learn and benefit and connect, and you'll learn all about that through the course of this conversation, which is brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, by the way, your local wireless and data provider, which is providing your local talk show. What a natural fit. They've been longtime partners with us in this opportunity. Shows on demand, of course, as we've mentioned, we don't just do it every day for the sake of doing it, but when there's a reason, when somebody calls and asks for the time, or sometimes we'll get an email, that's what happened with this chamber when they were, they sent out one of their big old emails, and I got in touch with Kathy and Karen and said, hey, I smell a talk show in here. And they graciously agreed, so we could share this information with you today. But we couldn't do it without a sponsor, and that is Cordova Wireless Communications. We really appreciate that. So get out your notepad and get ready, because there's a lot of information, a lot of opportunity coming your way. The Town Meeting Program with Kathy Renfelt and Karen Deaton Perry from the Cordova Chamber of Commerce on K L A M. So Kathy and Karen, as usual, there is much coming up with the Cordova Chamber of Commerce, and we want to dive in, and actually, we should probably get to the one that's coming up the soonest, which is Business Beers. How does that work?
Yeah, so Business Beers is a series, it's an event that we've been doing, a community building series, that we're trying to offer just kind of a nice casual space for business professionals, it could be entrepreneurs, or people working for organizations or larger businesses in town, or just someone that's aspiring, looking to get involved in the business community in Cordova. A space for them to come together and meet and talk with each other. And typically, we at the Chamber take that opportunity also to share some kind of resource with the group. So last month, we had one that was focused on women in business for International Women's Day and Women's History Month. So we shared some resources that were specific to women in business. And this month, we're going to be sharing resources and sharing information about our Business Empowerment Summit, which is coming up at the end of this week, from April 13th through the 15th. So we're going to be sharing information about that opportunity for businesses. And then also, there is going to be another event coming up on April 17th, which is an introduction to the Boost Program, which is an opportunity for entrepreneurs to leverage some intellectual property or some trademarks that are already created by Sandia National Labs. And so it's an opportunity for people that are, you could be anywhere from just a creative type person to a business professional, to someone who's good at working with people in teams, and they'll put you together with a whole team of people to launch a new venture using their intellectual property. So these are all opportunities for entrepreneurs and business professionals in Cordova that we're kind of supporting and trying to promote. And one way we're doing that is through this Business Beers event, which is open to everybody, not just Chamber members.
Okay, so when is that then? When and where, I should say?
So our next Business Beers event is going to be Wednesday, this Wednesday, April 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00 P. M., and we've been rotating the location of it. So this time, it's going to be at the Powder House. And we do provide some free appetizers, so we'll whet your appetite, and then people can whet their own whistle with whatever they want to drink there, alcohol, non-alcoholic, or just hang out and enjoy the camaraderie.
Okay. Now, this Business Empowerment Summit, is this the second one? Or have there been more than that? This is this kind of big opportunity for, that I remember we talked about last time, and thought, wow, this is pretty amazing that a community our size is able to do something like this. So how does that work? And some more specifics on how to get involved and where it is and when it is?
So I'll start off on this, and then I'll hand it over to Karen to kind of take over that conversation, but I'll give the basics. So the Business Empowerment Summit, this is the second Business Empowerment Summit. We host this twice a year, so our first one was in November, and now our second one is in April. And when people join and become a Chamber member, almost all of our memberships include at least some access to the Business Empowerment Summit. And you kind of choose your membership level based on how many of these classes you want to take. And the classes are held in person at the Cordova Center, but there is also an option to participate live via Zoom if you're going to be out of town, or if you just need to be home at that, you know, at that time. You can participate via Zoom. Then there's also an option, we record all of these sessions, and so if you can't participate at all live in person, you can access it via Zoom later. So let's just say that you signed up as a starter member with Court of a Chamber. That's $175 a year, and it gets you all the traditional membership benefits that we would provide, the promotional support, all of that, listings on all of our lists and spaces on all of our directories. But then also, it gets you into two classes, two of the six classes. And so the classes you can choose from, I'll let Karen talk about that. But we also held this back in November, like I said. So what a lot of people don't know is that that membership includes two classes in April, but you also have access to choose two of the classes that we took in November to watch the recordings of those. So yeah, so and then the next level is four classes. The next level is all six classes, plus that level gets to bring an extra person along from your organization. So lots of options to choose from, and yeah, I'll hand it over to Karen to talk more details about this particular.
Yeah, what's kind of on the agenda, the variety of different classes this time around?
Sure. So we are going to be hosting two classes per day throughout the weekend, so the 13th, 14th, and 15th. On the 13th, we are going to be talking about healthcare for small businesses. That's going to be hosted by both Sadara and Sally. This is a program that the Chamber offers as kind of a perk of your membership. You can learn more about how to get that for your small business at this class. And then the second class of that day will be the top do's and don'ts marketing strategies for any size business. And that is going to be taught by Brilliant Media Strategies. Then moving on to the 14th, we're going to be, the first class of the day is going to be by People A.K. And they are going to be talking about employee recruitment and retention strategies for Alaska. And then next, there's going to be a workshop about creating content calendars for your social media and how to stay consistent with that. And then our last two classes will be the morning of the 15th, which is a Saturday. And the first one's going to be taught by a local, Kristi Andrew. She's going to be teaching QuickBooks 102. And then our final class is going to be Cordova Cruise Ship Profiles for 2023. And that's just going to be going over what to expect and how to best benefit from the cruise ships that are going to be coming in this summer. And that's taught by Andrew J. Mu from the Alaska Cruise Line Agencies.
And are these, are these guests going to be video linking in? Or are they coming into town? Or how do people, how are your participants going to interact with them?
I believe two of our teachers are actually going to be here in person. That'll be for the workshop, and then also for the employee recruitment and retention strategies. Those are both held on the 14th. And then all of the classes on the 13th and the 15th will be taught by virtual teachers that are going to be, that are going to be live on Zoom during classes.
And I meant to ask before, when you talked about people being able to participate while the event is actually going, is it two-way? Or so there'll be Q and A, even with the video link, people can ask questions?
Yes. Yeah, it worked really well last time, actually. You know, the Cordova Center is set up so well for that, that it really felt pretty comfortable to do that for people in the room and for people on Zoom, I think.
Good, good. Okay. So you certainly don't do things small. That's quite, that's quite an agenda. And I assume that the details on this, for anybody who wants to look up, any of the things actually that we're talking about today is all on the website, cordovachamber.com?
Yes, it is. Yep, it's right under Business Resources. And there's also links in that page where you can go to sign up for the classes.
Okay, and more information about membership and so forth. Now, what was the date of the new Boost Program?
That's going to be on April 17th. And so one neat thing is that, so Sandia National Labs is a member of Court of a Chamber of Commerce, so they're supporting, you know, they're, they want to support the work that's happening in Cordova for entrepreneurs. And a couple of ways they're doing that, one is by supporting the Chamber and by helping us to provide all, you know, they're one of the sponsors of the Business Empowerment Summit, along with a lot of other great local and statewide and national companies. And then they're also, you know, going to be coming, they already came to Cordova once to meet with some specific individuals that we thought would be able to be a good match for the program that they're doing, you know. And then they did a webinar that was open to everybody that we just spread the word about that happened last week. And that was introducing this Boost Program and kind of answering questions about it and doing some basic stuff. And now they're going to be coming back in person to Cordova, and that's going to be on April 17th. And that's going to be from 9:00 A. M. to 3:00 P. M. at the Cordova Center. It's free and it's open to everyone. And you know, you could, like I said, you don't have to be someone who's currently an entrepreneur. You could be someone who just has some big ideas, or just has some skills that you don't think are being fully utilized. Basically, there is an application process that you do with them. And then if you're chosen, then they'll put you together with a team, and they'll give you all kinds of mentoring and resources. And like I said, you get access to their library of intellectual property. And then they would try to help, the whole idea here is that this laboratory has all this intellectual property, all of these patents. And they want the patents to be used in commerce, in the world. And this is one way that they're trying to help make that happen, by empowering entrepreneurs to do it, giving them a team of experts around them to try to help bring these theoretical ideas that are out there to the world in some kind of a real form. So that is, there's more information about that that we're going to be posting to the Court of a Chamber online calendar, and also sharing through our social media channels. And if you're, if you're a Chamber member, you also get our emails. Please open those and read those, because there's a wealth of information in there about all of this stuff, along with details and links about how to participate. So yeah, though at the Business Empowerment Summit, Sandia National Labs is going to have a table there, since they're a sponsor. And they'll be able to answer people's questions there too, about what this event is and how it's going to work and who should go. So if you want to learn more about Sandia and this Boost Program, one way to do that would be to come to the Business Empowerment Summit or to Business Beers, and you'd get to talk to their representative there as well.
Okay, all right. Well, it sounds like a lot of good information, and that opportunity to sort of do the whole, it brings to mind that phrase about if you're doing something you love to work, then it doesn't feel like work, kind of a thing. I mean, I blew the wording, but you'd, yeah, to turn your favorite thing maybe into, into something more than just, than just an idea floating around in your head. Something you can actually do something with.
I just really encourage folks out there in Cordova. I mean, it's really easy to feel like, I'm not really an entrepreneur. I'm not really a business person. That imposter syndrome comes in and makes you feel like you're not really worthy of the title. But get out there and get more information and get support around you. That's what we're here for at the Chamber. We're trying to provide all these opportunities so that you can, you can feel like, like, yeah, I'm really doing this, and I'm empowered to do it, and I'm supported to do it.
Well, and there's been, you know, much to the detriment of traditional employers, there's, there's been much more of a movement in that direction of people, you know, realizing post-pandemic, you know, maybe there is a way for me to change things up and, and launch out on my own. So, you know, I mean, that has its ups and downs, but we're focusing on these particular ups, of course. Now, we got to get to Shorebird, because that's a big one. So when's that coming up and what needs to be done between now and then?
Sure. So our Shorebird Festival is going to be May 4th through 7th this year. And we wanted to put together a guide for businesses on how they can get involved and participate and benefit from this group of people that's going to be coming into town and ready to spend money. And so we have a guide on our website. It's under Business Resources. It's called the Business Participation Guide for the Shorebird Festival. And we have quite a few ways that you can get involved, including the Shopping and Dining Guide, offering local sales and specials, hosting a third-party activity for festival goers. You could be tabling anywhere from info tables, kitchen rental, and then also artisan market vendor at the festival. And we also have opportunities for you to get involved with either donating a passport prize for our Shop Cordova First passports, or just stamping passports as they come through your business. And then finally, sponsorship of the festival is available as well, to get your name out there, your business name, and tell people that you're supporting this.
Yeah, well, we've always tried to be involved that way, you know, with you guys. And is the, has the passport thing been part of Shorebird for a while? I thought that was largely a holiday thing. Is this new, or has it been like that for a while?
Yeah, the passport is a great way for us to measure the economic impact of our festivals and help us know how much money is being spent.
And where they're going, and yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's great for the holiday one, but I think personally that it's even more important for these festivals where we're bringing, where folks are coming in from outside. Because those folks, that's, you know, in order for an economy to be healthy, you need to have that healthy churn of that outside money coming in, and then being spent and re-stent as many times in town before it leaves. So that holiday passport, that kind of records that middle part of the cycle, where it's being spent and spent before it goes out. But the Shorebird and Fungus Festival passports, and we may do more, you know, for more festivals too, that, that really captures how it comes into town. And so I think that's a really important part of the whole cycle to try to capture. And so, yeah, we've been doing it for Shorebird Festival for at least two years now, maybe three.
Good, all right. Well, I mean, it's a great idea. And then are you, as far as what you're expecting in the way of speakers and events and so forth? How's it shaping up?
We have eight speakers and presenters booked currently. And we are hoping for about 200 registrants. Currently, we're at about two, or sorry, at 120. So we're getting really close. And we do have a local registrant discount code that people can get online and sign up for the festival.
Yeah, well, you guys have been doing that for, for a while. Now, of these 120, 120 registrants, are you, is this a tally of out-of-towners, or is it everybody?
Yes, this is most, I think about 115 of those have been out-of-town people.
Good. So you guys pretty excited about it? Look like it's going to be a good one?
Yeah, it's going to be a great festival. Yeah, we've, you know, it's always, we, as a partner festival, you know, the Chamber is the primary event planner and facilitator, but we work with the Forest Service and the Net Loft. And, you know, there's other entities in town that support the Sign Center. So there's the, the schedule is just filling up with all kinds of fun things to do for locals and visitors. And, you know, the Net Loft is bringing in this, you know, absolutely renowned nature journalist named John Muir Lawes, who's going to be doing some amazing workshops with them. And then we're bringing in as our keynote Garrett Vin, which is a really well-respected and famous nature photographer and author. And he works with the Cornell Lab of Ornithology doing that. Yeah, folks, speakers from Mexico and Chile, you know, local connection. Chris Weber's going to be doing a talk about his big, big year. For those that don't know that name, that's Mike Weber's son, lives in Anchorage. He's got a really good story and a lot of really beautiful media to share about that. And yeah, lots of fun kids activities. Obviously, just viewing the birds is really fun too. But I think for locals, they just really enjoy Shorebird as kind of a kickoff to the spring and the summer season. And there's even going to be a live music event. There's going to be some culinary food tasting events. There's lots of paint night, there's lots of stuff that's happening with Shorebird Festival this year. And we're really excited that registration numbers are looking so strong already. You know, coming off of COVID, nobody really knew what to expect there. So that's good to see. And the Shorebird Festival is really great, because those people that come in for that event tend to have really a lot of respect for the community and for the ecosystem, and be really genuinely interested in, you know, having those kind of real experiences here. And that's exactly what we're going for with tourism here.
Well, we talked about that last time when we visited before the last Empowerment Summit, how that is really, you know, the idea of interacting with an environment or a culture or a community is becoming the, it's not like you go in and you just sort of wander around and look at things. You really want to connect more and, and have an experience that's, that's really based on, on that, on that interaction and making it more personal. Was, I forget if there was a name for that, or?
Yeah, we've got, our, our new destination strategy is based on a regenerative tourism model.
Right, right.
That's probably the phrase you're thinking of. And the idea there is that not only are we trying to create these, you know, strong connections for the visitors, but we're, you know, everything that we're doing, we want to make sure that it benefits the local community, environment, business, culture. And if it doesn't, if what the work that's happening with tourism doesn't, isn't doing that, then that's not work that we want to do. We want everything that happens to have a net positive impact on the community, the culture, the environment, and of course, the economy as well.
Yeah, yeah. Instead of having it just focused on the economy, which has been so much of what's happened over the years prior to the Chamber's sort of explosion in the middle of all of this. And, you know, visitors that, that want to leave a place better than they found it, you know, in, in, whether it's through shopping with local vendors or connecting with the community in some way where they continue to interact. When they go back home, they continue to follow what's going on, invest financially or through interest or through sharing information, and really try and, and learn what it's like to be in a place like Cordova. So I'm glad that's still working, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a process. And, you know, the events that we host that are like Shorebird Festival and Fungus Festival and Salmon Jam and all the festivals that happen in this town, they do a great job of, kind of without trying, of fulfilling that model. So we're, we're happy to continue to invest our efforts and our time to putting these events on and trying to give every opportunity for not only the local community, but the local businesses to participate and find benefit there.
Good. Well, how is membership? I mean, has it been pretty steady? I know COVID made everything weird, so we sort of wondered whether we were going to get more people sign up or fewer. And, you know, the general support for the Chamber still seemed to be good?
Yeah, you know, we, we launched a whole new, completely updated membership structure. So we, before the way it was set up is, you know, the higher level membership, the more promotional support you got, the more listings you got, the more categories you were allotted, that sort of stuff. And we kind of opened that up, so it's not gate-kept to just the higher level members anymore. And we said, anybody who's a member can get as much of this promotion and exposure as they want. And then we, you know, created this Business Empowerment Summit. It's something we've been wanting to do at the Chamber for a while anyways. But we also, Karen did a survey of the membership and was able to really put forth compelling data that said that it's not only what we want, but it's also what our members want, to put on an event like this and provide this kind of training. So added that in as part of a membership benefit. We also, you know, now offer this healthcare benefit, which is kind of, sounds too good to be true, but actually a real thing that can be a huge benefit to our members.
So that was, that was, I mean, I got pretty excited about that last time when we were talking about the show, some way for very small businesses to actually be able to offer healthcare in ways that previously have only been available to larger organizations. And I mean, we tried with our two and a half employees or whatever, I remember years ago, we were looking at the possibility of, of doing something, you know, where the business provided healthcare, and it was just, you know, there was no way. But, you know, now you guys, it sounds like you've kind of flipped that around. Is that the gist of it?
Yeah, you know, this type of, of system, this kind of, it's an alternative to a traditional health insurance model. And it's kind of more medical cost-sharing based. But this used to be only available to religious organizations. And so now it's opened up and it can be available to other groups. And so our Chamber membership is a group that is eligible now for this kind of membership. It was not hard for us to set up the association to be eligible through the Small Association Leadership Alliance, which is the entity that's going to be talking at our Business Empowerment Summit and answering everybody's questions about it. I think that people have, do have very, I mean, everybody's situation is different with their health. Everybody has different needs, every business is different. But it's really flexible, this plan. You don't have to have full-time staff, you don't have to have year-round staff. You can insure somebody who's a part-time seasonal staff. And I say the word insure, but it's really, it's an alternative to insurance. It's a different kind of coverage. But it's preventative and it's the emergent kind. With RX benefits, you can add on dental, there's lots of options. And I really am excited, because I know that it's been hard for businesses to recruit and retain staff. And I think that if they could start offering these kinds of benefits to their employees, and it doesn't come with a big, huge price tag to the business, that could, that could do a lot to help keep employees here in Cordova. I mean, this town, it has a little bit higher cost of living. Sometimes it's harder to find housing. So we can do everything we can to head to events to keep, you know, skilled and talented people in this community working for jobs with Cordova businesses.
Well, there's no reason not to get ahead of that if you've got the resources to do it. You know, I mean, it's the Chamber, obviously, to be, to be thinking a few steps ahead of what could happen and be ready to respond. In addition to your ability that you showed during the pandemic to respond quickly to emerging situations and providing businesses access to resources and ideas to get them through that period, which, you know, is going to be one of the things I'll always remember the most about going through that whole thing, is how good a job you guys did. Karen, I wish you'd stop interrupting over there, by the way. Anything to add to what Kathy and I have been talking about here?
I can go more into depth on the opportunities for business participation.
Okay, do that, yeah, let's do that.
Sure. So our first way that you can get involved is the Shopping and Dining Guide. And there are two ways to participate in that. The first one for Chamber members, it is free to get listed in the guide. This guide has both your open hours and a marker on the map, so visitors can easily find you and know what you do. So if you are a dining establishment, you'll be listed under either Coffee and Breakfast, Lunch or Dinner and Drinks. And this is a free listing for all Chamber members. And then the second way that you can get in the guide is by purchasing a full-color ad. And these ads are, they're listed on the left side of the inside panel or the right side of the outer panel.
Okay.
And these ads can be purchased by signing up at the link in our website page for the business participation.
All righty.
And then if you're not a Chamber member and you still want to get in the guide, I would recommend go ahead and sign up for a Chamber membership so that we can include you. This time of year, it's always kind of funny, because people, you know, are just getting started in their business for the season. And so maybe they just haven't gotten around to renewing their membership yet. But it's really important to do that now, because we want to get you in that guide. Not only for the Shorebird Festival registrants, but we also have a conference coming to town in May, in late May, that we're going to be handing this guide out to. So it gets in the hand of every festival registrant, everybody that's going to this conference and convention that's coming to town, and it'll also go out to everybody that's coming in on these cruise ships. Of course, also being in our, in our visitor center here, online, at the Cordova Center. You know, it's got good, it's got good circulation, and it really gets into the hands of the people who, who we want to know this information.
Okay. Other business opportunities, Karen?
Yeah, so hosting a sale or special during Shorebird Festival is one of the add-ons that we have as an advertising opportunity for our membership. So when you fill out your membership application, you can choose between several different advertising add-ons. And one of them is hosting a sale or special. And you can retroactively add this to your membership if this is something that you want to participate in. It costs $20, and you get included on group postings on our social channel. You'll get included on the festival website schedule about what type of sale. So this could be, say you're a coffee shop and you want to, you have a special dream.
and you want to, you have a special drink that you're gonna be making during the Shorebird Festival, or you're a bakery, and you have some awesome pastries, something like that. We help get the word out about those offerings, and we send our registrants to your businesses to take advantage of those sales and specials. So if, if you are a Chamber member, and this is something you wanna retroactively add to your member, your membership, shoot me an email at programs@chamber@cordovachamber.com, and I will get you added to that.
Okay, Dunland Donuts. I'll just throw that one out there for free, somebody can have it.
Love it.
I like donuts. What else?
So third-party activities are things that are like tours, or they're, they're an extra activity that our festival goers can sign up for that costs them money. So it's boat chores that you wanna offer, or a tasting party that you can host, or say the concert that's happening in town. These are all third-party activities that your business could offer. And we, you know, you sign up for that as a Chamber member, and we promote those things as happening as part of the festival official schedule. And again, to host one of those third-party activities, it's programs@cordovachamber.com.
Okay. Very easy website to remember. Nice.
There are three types of tables that we have that you can host at the actual festival location at the Cordova Center. We have an artisan market that's gonna be happening on the Saturday and Sunday of the festival, that's the sixth and the seventh. Chamber members, you get a free booth, if this is something you wanna participate in. If you're not a Chamber member, it's $25 to get that. We will also have information tables for any of the organizations in town that wanna get the word out about a project or something that, that they're working on. And then, again, same for Chamber members, it's free, and non-Chamber members, it's $25. And then the last opportunity for hosting inside of the Cordova Center during the festival is for kitchen vendors. If you wanna sell breakfast or lunch to the festival goers on the fifth and sixth, shoot me an email again at programs@chordovachamber.com, and I will get you signed up to do that.
Good. By the way, how, you know, I know it's, it's been open for a long time now, but I still am just always curious, how has the, has the Cordova Center lived up to its potential that we all hope for in terms of being a nerve center for this kind of thing?
Well, I think that local people definitely are leveraging it, and local businesses. I mean, there was just a whole weekend of beautiful dance performances in there. There was bake sales happening during that event that were benefiting local businesses. Meanwhile, there were people enjoying the library, and filling out their PFD applications up there, and like, you know, getting support and enjoying the, the museum. The city offices downstairs. So it's kind of nice to not just have a standalone meeting venue, that if it doesn't host a million meetings a year, it's not worth anything, because we're also co-located, you know, that, the Cordova Center is also co-located with the city offices. So you'd be, you know, the city would be paying to have that, you know, space anywhere. So it's co-located with this event venue, that can also then host these events. And a lot of the events that have been held there have been conferences and meetings and events that are somehow connected to local businesses. So the one that's coming up in May is the Alaska Telecom Association. So that's coming up May, I think, the 23rd through the 25th. And that'll be about 100 to 150 people coming to town for that. And so Cordova Telecom Cooperative kind of got the word to Alaska Telecom Association about our meeting facility, and kind of helped recruit them in. Cordova Electric Cooperative has done that several times as well over the past couple of years, bringing in some big events to be hosted here. They had kind of a statewide electrical conference here last year, and a couple of other ones, you know, the, the statewide museums association was, I think, the very first conference or meeting to be held at the Cordova Center. And of course, that was recruited in by the, the, you know, Cordova Historical Society. So the Chamber, this year, we are trying to take a little bit more active role in helping to recruit meetings and conferences to the Cordova Center. We're working with the city to do that. And we think that one of the best avenues for that is gonna be actually word of mouth through local businesses and local individuals. So we're gonna be doing some outreach, probably this summer, to local businesses and individuals, and just trying to get a feel for if there are meetings and conferences that they know about, that would be a good fit for the Cordova Center, and trying to get that contact information, and sending that, that convention or meeting our, our information, and trying to get them signed up. But if you went and asked Mimi, ever at the Cordova Center, how things are going there, she would say that it is packed. Like, there's events happening there all the time. Like, her, we were over there the other day, and just looking at her planner, I mean, just, you know, walking past it gave me anxiety, because there's so much, so many things on there. But she's very busy, they're very busy, the rooms are, are getting occupied and used, and a lot of it is being used by, for local purposes, for local reasons. You know, people hosting birthday parties, and book clubs, and, you know, committee meetings, and board meetings there. And our, you know, the Chamber, we, we use it for all of our festivals, and the Business Empowerment Summit, and our events. And then, of course, there's, you know, internal city committees and boards and meetings that have the rooms. So there's a lot happening there. There is some room for growth, and, and we hope to leverage that as much as we can, to bring in those outside visitors, just to kind of stimulate the economy that way as well. But it is getting a lot of use already.
Well, that's good. And I mean, a, a big part of it was supposed to be enhancing the, the local quality of life, giving Cordovans a place to go, a really nice place to go and, and do things and have activities. But there's always been that hope of, of, of it attracting some outside interest. And so, you know, you're right, any, I mean, like, for example, in, in radio, we are part of larger organizations and associations in the state. I would think that that would be the case with grocers, it could be the case with various retailers, particularly any of those that are, that are associated with a larger brand, you know, that, that where they might be able to ask about the possibility of having some sort of statewide event, or, you know, pie in the sky, some sort of national event, that in a, in a unique place that everybody's really gonna remember. And that, of course, you know, helps, like you said, helps the economy. The ratio of, you, you bring in a dollar, we used to say it circulated about seven times. I don't know with the increase of online spending, if that's still the case, but it's probably in the ballpark, so that outside investment. And back to now, what you were talking about with, with your, your Dining Guide and some of these other things, anytime we have an event like that, the Chamber members or the people that participate in those, they are immediately then in front of all those people when they come to town. One of the benefits, Karen, that you were talking about.
It's a great vehicle. The Shopping and Dining Guide, and, and our other lists and publications like that. And a lot of these conferences and, and events, when they're even considering coming, the first thing they want from us is a list of all the lodging providers, a list of all the caterers, list of all the tour providers, and we refer Chamber members. So you wanna be on those lists, and that's another great reason to be a Chamber member. But really, I think the, the bigger message that, that we're trying to talk a lot about late also, is just how we are trying to, you know, empower the business community to, you know, foster these connections and, and enhance quality of life for the whole community. Like, we're trying to, we have this vision of what, of Cordova in the future being thriving, and, and, you know, sustainable. And that's, that's something that we're, we're working towards in everything we do at the Chamber. And if that's something that's of interest to any of you listening on the radio, there's lots of opportunities to get involved, whether you want to join as a member, and then maybe sit on a committee, and, you know, get, get into the, the weeds or something, or maybe you just wanna volunteer. I mean, we're looking for volunteers for the Shorebird Festival, right, Karen? Yeah. And for a lot of our festivals, events, we need that sort of thing. Yeah.
Yeah. What kind of volunteers, by the way, since we're on that subject, what are some of the different things to do?
We are looking for volunteers who would like to help us man the welcome table throughout the festival. That, we will have them starting on the fourth for both setup and all the way through the festival events during that evening, throughout the weekend, and then also with takedown on Sunday.
Sure. And are you, where is that table? Is that at the Cordova Center?
Yes, it's right at the entrance of the Cordova Center on top side.
Okay, good. Well, and anybody that has questions, I mean, you talked about having people do food and some other stuff. So a lot of good questions, that programs@cordovachamber.com, is that what you said the address was? Yeah, that's a good one for people to use. And then, you know, just going to the website, of course, which is sort of the hub for, for all of this information. And you guys are really big into the social media, obviously, you push things out all the time. So getting connected with you in that regard is also a good idea. So lots coming up. If it's too much to remember, again, head to the site. Anything else as we wind down? Karen, maybe start with you?
Um, yeah, I think, I think that's all.
All right. Kathy, what do you think?
Yeah, I just wanna encourage, just put one more shout-out out there, you know, whether you're currently a business owner, or you're just have aspirations to be, young people, old people, there's, there are all different backgrounds, there's room for everybody to succeed in Cordova. And we're lucky to have a community that is so supportive of create, of creativity and innovation. And it just seems to come naturally to Cordovans to be that way. And I really feel like that is setting us apart as a community. We have these huge national labs interested in our town.
Yeah.
For that stuff. Because, because we are known, we're, we're getting a name for being creative and innovative here. So.
Well, we just talked with that lady that came to visit with CD, I should, I should remember a name, and I don't. She says, anytime I put something on our website, then it just goes out of my brain, because I know it's there. Nancy, right. Doing the thing with the lighting and that pilot program they're talking about, we'd be the first city in the entire country to do that. When we were doing our COVID response, there were state officials looking at what Cordova was doing, and, and saying, hey, we should do that in all, you know, all of our similar, or in some cases, even dissimilar communities. So no, it doesn't surprise me at all. But it's great to have you, you guys are really the tip of the spear in a lot of ways on that. So I continue to appreciate how the Chamber has, has just flowered, you know, in, in these last many years, under your leadership, Kathy, and bringing good folks like Karen and your other staff members into it. So congratulations on continuing to move things forward, and I'm glad we could chat a little bit here today.
Well, thanks. And thanks for your kind of unending support, too, JR. You're always here to talk about stuff and support the work that we do that supports the community. You're supporting a lot of, of folks in this town, and just, you know, I don't know what, what we do if we didn't have, have your radio station giving us all the news and info, and being a really active part. So appreciate you as well.
Thank you very much. Well, symbiosis is the word I learned at Epcot Center for that. So we'll.
That's a fucking best of a word.
So great, great again to have visited with you, and, and I'll look forward to the next one. Kathy Renfelt and Karen Deaton Perry, our guests from the Cordova Chamber of Commerce on this edition of the Town Meeting Program, brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications. You remember, we were talking about the importance of outside dollars coming into our community and circulating around? We mentioned that in the show. CTC and Cordova Wireless, as a formidable economic force, bring in millions, last I heard, $12 million a year of outside money that comes into Cordova, simply because these businesses exist, these cooperative, well, it's a cooperative with CTC. Because they are there and doing their thing, we get all of this investment, thanks to the structure of federal spending. And if they're right, and it's still a one-to-seven ratio, then, I mean, that's, what is 12 times 7? 84? 84 million dollars of economic activity that we don't have to dig out of the ground, or take from the forest, or do anything like that. Just happens. So that's not a bad deal. And fortunately, even though we threw a whole bunch of information at you, if any of it went by a little fast, two things. First of all, this show will be going on our YouTube channel. And by the way, hello, any YouTube people who are catching the on-demand version of this show, glad you went to Cordova TV. Those of you hearing this on the radio who wanna hear it again, or encourage somebody else to listen to it, send them to YouTube, youtube.com/cordovatv. That's the name of our channel, like Cordova Radio, Cordova TV. And you can listen on demand there, and stop, and rewind, or play it slower, or add captions. Youtube.com/cordovatv. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Cordova Wireless. And thank you, listening audience. We will bring you the rest of your 10:00 AM hour programming, to which you are entitled. Fish Radio, Calendar, Tradio, I think, all on the schedule. And we'll look forward to seeing you next time for the Town Meeting Talk Show right here on KLAM. Have a great day.